Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Uh, tonight is November tenth, twenty twenty-five, and we'd like to call the school board meeting for a working session and to order, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival?
Here.
Ms. Ricard?
Here.
Mr. Faruk?
Here.
Mr. Hetchpeth?
Here.
Ms. Rizzi? Dr. Harris Mohammed? Ms. Burke? Mr. Jafari? Ms. Fernandez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance and moments of silence, and it could be led by Ms. Ricard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And now, we will have our translation services announcement.
Good evening. On behalf of the Language Justice Team, we welcome you. If you need interpretation from English to Spanish this evening, please come see me. I will be in the back with the interpreters. We have interpretation headsets for anyone that needs one. Interpretation in Spanish is also available for those watching this meeting through Zoom. I will now make this same announcement in Spanish. Buenas noches a todos por parte del equipo de Justicia Linguística. Si usted necesita interpretación del inglés al español, por favor diríjase a la mesa de atrás donde estaré yo con los interpretes. Yo les puedo dar audífonos para que puedan escuchar la reunión de la junta escolar en español. También es, uh, interpretación está disponible para los que están viendo la reunión a través de Zoom. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt the agenda.
It's been moved by Mr. Percival and seconded by Mr. Jafari. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Faruk?
Yes.
Mr. Hetchpeth?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed? Ms. Burke? Mr. Jafari? Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving right along to Dreams for RPS, uh, two point zero one, receipt update on Dreams for RPS Goal One, new state accountability system.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Cameras. Um, it was our hope to actually share with you our accountability data. We still have not received that, um, but we also have it on the agenda for December. And our hope, we've been in constant communication with VDOE, and it's our hope that we will have it for our December meeting. But we felt that this would be the opportune time. I know we kind of did a, uh, initial kind of introduction into how the system works. We kind of wanted to do a refresher and kind of, um, take it somewhat deeper, um, but also share some examples with you from the lens of elementary, middle, and high since they all look somewhat different. And so Valenta Wade, our manager of testing and accountability, is here with us tonight. Um, so she'll take about fifteen minutes, um, to, uh, share the new accountability system and how it works and take any questions you may have. Valenta Wade?
Good evening, School Board members, Superintendent Cameras. I am Valenta Wade, manager of testing, and tonight I'm going to share the new state accountability system. As Solomon mentioned, we are eagerly anticipating the release of our data from the State Department. We are currently working with a third-party vendor to do some final validations of the data to make sure that the data is correct and that it aligns to the business rules and calculations that's set forth in the framework. Once they are finished with their validations, they will then send it back to the, our division for us to have one final review before it is sent to the public. So tonight, as Solomon said, we're not going to share any data, but we are going to go over the framework so that you can have a clear understanding of how the data is calculated. So when it arrives, you will know how we got the data. So, in the next few weeks, our schools will be categorized as either distinguished, on-track, off-track, or needs intensive support. It is a point-based system, which is new because in the past we always had percentages, so this is a point-based system. There is a small catch. Once the school is given their performance category, the state will look at federal identification and identify which schools are federally identified. Um, if a school is federally identified, they may have their performance category lowered by one. So if a school earns eighty points, for a very small time, they'll be on track. But once the state looks at federal identification, if the school is identified, they could go down by one, and then they'll be off-track. So let's jump into the identifications for...
I'm sorry, can I ask a clarifying question? When you say drop by one, do you mean one step or one point? What do you mean?
So, it will drop, so the performance category would go by, down by one. So if the school has eighty points and they are on track and they're also identified federally, they go completely from on-track to off-track. Their points don't change, they're just, their performance category would change.
And just to clarify, the same would be true if they were at eighty-five. Doesn't, not just when you're at the cusp. Chair also noted, and we should correct, the, the on-track category is eighty to eighty-five. Uh, thank you for that. Appreciate it. You're always improving.
I whispered it to him. I didn't say it out loud.
That's okay.
Ms. Percival has...
Oh, yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but it, it was right on the heels of that. Is it limited to a single category drop, or can it drop two categories?
Only one.
So it is limited?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so there's, and thank you, and please, if you have any questions, this is a learning opportunity, so if you have any questions, please stop and ask the questions so I can answer it. Uh, so there's three federal identifications that we can have as a district for individual schools. The first one is comprehensive support school, and that looks at the overall school performance. How are all students doing in math, reading, and science? The other two are additional targeted support and targeted support, and they are specifically for student groups. And when I say student groups, I'm talking about our black students, our white students, our Asians, and my teen, um, English learners. So the last, those last two bullets are specifically for our student groups, whereas the first comprehensive is overall, the overall school. Let's go a little deeper into each one of these. So, for a comprehensive support, there's three ways in how a school can be identified. The first way is any school that is in the bottom five percent of the state for, 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 for performance will be identified as a CSI school. Let me explain that a different way. The way the state will do it, they have elementary, they have middle, and they have high school. They will look at each grade band separately. They will rank the schools across the state from highest to lowest. And the schools that are in the very bottom five percent will be identified as a CSI school. That's for elementary, that's for middle, and that's for high school. So that's the first way a school can be identified as a CSI school. The second way is if a school has a graduation rate less than sixty-seven percent, that school will also be identified as a CSI school. Then the third way is if a school has a student group that is not making progress over several, several years, then that school will also be identified as a CSI school. There are the three ways a school can be identified as a CSI school. And once they're identified as a CSI school, they stay identified for three consecutive years. And the way that they get out of CSI school is to no longer be in the bottom five percent of the state. Any questions? Yes.
And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, you're saying that they can't come out of that status irrespective of whether they achieve or come up or do anything?
They have to stay there for three years.
They have to stay there irrespective of performance, improvement in performance?
Correct.
And you said something else that kind of either piggybacked that or something, or impacted that at the end, and I wanted to make sure that I got that correct. You said that they could move from one place to another. How?
So they can get out of comprehensive support by, in the three, the next three years after the third year, not being the bottom five percent of the state.
Just want to be clear, they got the three years.
Yeah.
Irrespective. Okay.
Okay. So targeted support and improvement is, um, specifically about student groups. And so, every, talk about CSI schools, right? There's going to be a highest performing CSI school for elementary, for middle, and high school. They are still in the bottom five percent of the state, but there's going to be a highest performing school, this is the highest performing CSI school. And that highest performing CSI school will set the CUSCOR for how the federal will, will look at student groups for each school. So the highest CSI school is going to be the threshold, a CUSCOR, that's going to determine if every other school in the state is going to be identified for targeted support. So we have an example. The very top is the highest CSI school for elementary. For that top chart is the highest CSI school for elementary. The bottom chart is a school that we're going to use the data from the top to see if that school was identified federally for targeted support school. To be identified federally for a target, as targeted support schools, you have to be below every, the framework, the reading, the math, and the science. You have to be below the highest performing CSI school. So the highest performing CSI school, their overall framework is a seventy. That's the first thing we're going to look at, seventy point four. The highest CSI school reading performance is at a nineteen point zero one. Their math is at a fifteen point nine six, and their science is at a seven point five. The school must have a score, a score higher than all those indicators on the top. So you look at it, look at the frame score, the framework score. Our students with disabilities, our economically disadvantaged students, and our English learners are all below the seventy point four. So we're going to look at those three specifically to see if they were going to be identi, if they're going to be identified federally. So to be identified federally, those three, those three student groups must be at or below in math, reading, and science. So you look at students with disabilities, you can see that the reading is at fifteen point eight eight. Well, the reading performance for the highest CSI schools are nineteen point zero one. So that school is below the highest CSI school. That's one. I look at the special, the students with special, the students with disabilities math performance, they're at a thirteen point nine six. Where the highest CSI schools at a fifteen point nine six, so they're not, they're, they're below for math. That's two. The last one is the science, and they're at an eight point zero three. They are above. But because they did not have a below in every single math, science, and reading, that school does not identify for special, students with, students with disabilities. So let me go look at the next one. The next one is economically disadvantaged. And you can see that they are below the highest CSI school in all those four indicators. The framework score is below, the reading is below, the math is below, the science is, is below. So that school is identified as a targeted support school in the area or the student group for economically disadvantaged students. Right? Question?
Ms. Rizzi, and then Mr. Percival, I think, had a question, so only didn't.
So the science looks like it's equivalent, right? Does that still count as below?
Yes, it has to be, it has to be at or below. So if it's, if it's at or below, then the stu, it's going to be, it's not good. So it has to be above the CUSCOR, the highest CSI school. So to your point, the last two examples, that seven point five is at the CUSCOR, but it has to be above the CUSCOR. And the last category, the English learners, they would not be identified because they are not below in the area of, um, of the math performance. So they would not be ident, that subgroup would not be identified for, so this school, it will only be identified as targeted support school for our economically disadvantaged students. I want to pause. That's a lot to say again. The highest CSI school, a lot.
Mr. Percival?
So going to the top scores, you said the highest performing CSI school. Are all of those numbers coming from the same school?
Yes.
So we're not, so there could actually be a higher reading score in a CSI school, but they're not the top performing school. So if they're below the overall framework, but they have a twenty for reading, the number's still nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi?
So could you explain again why the English learners would not be considered?
Because their math performance is above the highest CSI math performance. The highest CSI math performance on that chart above is fifteen point ninety-six, and the school's math performance is at a sixteen point five, which is higher than the fifteen point nine six.
So they're reading...
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, two ways of saying the same thing. They either have to be below every uh, indicator from the top performing CSI. Or, um, if they have one that's above, they don't. So in this case, they have the math at sixteen point five is above the fifteen point nine six. So they have one which is actually doing better than the top performing CSI. So that group is not considered targeted. And just to make matters more confusing, this isn't even the state system. This is the federal system, which then gets overlaid on the state.
Okay, any other questions about targeted support?
Keep going.
This is by far, um, a very complex system compared to the past, so if you have any other questions, just feel, feel free to ask. But this one is pretty easy. Additional targeted support is only applied after a school has been identified for targeted support, and they don't, and they don't show any improvement. So if you don't show improvement over certain, several years, three years, you will become an ATS I school. Um, so that's pretty straightforward compared to the targeted support schools. So, target, additional targeted support schools, when a school has a student group that's not showing improvement over consecutive years.
Okay, so they could...
So I, I left this off. So CSI schools are every three, they, they stay in that status for three years. A targeted support school, they can get out of that every year as long as they're performing higher than the highest CSI school. So targeted support school can be, they can exit out that every year. Yes. So a targeted support school can exit out every year as long as they are performing higher than the highest CSI school. You're welcome. Uh, so this is just a chart to summarize, um, what we just discussed. Um, there is a MOU, so a school division that has forty percent of their schools identified as CSI or, and targeted support will be in a MOU. Or if the school has more than, the school district has more than ten schools identified as CSI, they will be identified or under a MOU for the State Department.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So this replaces the current mechanism for MOUs, which is quite frankly, lacking in any consistent application across the state. Uh, so this will be a numeric-driven process. We'll see how we shake out, but there may be new school systems that have MOUs based on the state that we shall...
So we'll automatically...
It is... Yeah. It is not yet clear if there will be a standardized substance to the MOUs, which would replace our existing one, which is different from other school divisions. Each of them were crafted individually. Um, what we do know is that the mechanism to get an MOU will be standardized. I think it is an open question as to then is there a standard set of interventions that are required? Uh, that I don't know.
So before I go to the framework, um, are there any other questions about the federal identification? So our framework, we, um, shared these slides before, um, and I will do a disclaimer that this is the framework as of tonight. Things could change slightly, and if they do change, we'll let you all know. Uh, elementary and middle school are very similar. They have three big buckets, uh, mastery, growth, and readiness. We currently do not know if the readiness, with, with that five Cs performance task would be included moving forward. Last year, it was not included in the data. Um, the school board, the state school board is meeting this week to talk about the five Cs. And so it could be eliminated, or it could be defined, but right now, we don't have any additional information about the five Cs performance for elementary. You look at high school, high school's a little bit different because, because they don't have growth. Growth is, uh, limited to grades four through eight. For high school, they have the mastery at fifty, the readiness at thirty-five. And as we all know, the biggest part for readiness for high school is the three Es, enrollment, employment, and enlistment. Then graduation is the fifteen percent, which the state will be using the FGI. There's a mastery index included in our accountability system. Uh, every student who takes the test will be accounted for, or will have points, will earn points. Um, in elementary, grades three through eight, if a student takes the test, they will at least count as point two five if they fail below basic. But if they pass advanced, they will, they will count as one point two five. For high school and for science, there's only three levels. There's basic, there's proficient, and there, and there's advanced. So if a student takes a science test and fail, they will count point seven five of a point. Here's a sample of what that looks like. Um, if we're looking at the last year's model, last year's accountability system, those first two columns, the advanced level and the proficient level, the twenty kids in the advanced level and the thirty kids in the proficient, proficient level were only counted for in the old system, which means you would only have had, you would have only had fifty points. But with this system and with this index, we now can include the students who are below basic and, uh, basic level. And so that fifty is now eighty-two point five points. So under the old system, we would only have fifty points, but under this system, we could have eighty-two point five because we can include students that fail below basic and fail basic. There's also a, um, growth, oh, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Rizzi?
So I see twenty-five and thirty.
Because the old system was binary. It was either, either you pass, you count as a one, or you fail, it's zero. And so on the old system, it wasn't a one point two five. So those students would just be twenty times one, which would have been just twenty. And then the thirty times one, which would be thirty, so you'll have fifty points. I didn't explain that well, so thanks for asking that que, that question. Um, so the old system, you would have fifty points. The new system, we have eighty-two point five points because of the index. And then there's the growth. Growth again is for grades four through eight in math and reading. Um, I will tell you, um, the data that's coming out soon includes a different measure for growth. It'll be, that will be in the future. In the future, we're going to have a different system for measuring growth. And once the state identifies how growth will be calculated in the future, we'll let you all know. But it will not be the same growth measure that we currently have when the data comes out in the next few weeks. All right, so here's an example of a report. It's a lot of data. I'm going to start with as easy as I can. Um, let's just focus on the first column and the last column, okay? The first column gives you an overall, a overall summary of how much, how many points they got in each of those three buckets. The top one, the ninety-three point five six, is how many points the school got overall. So a ninety-three point five six is pretty good. That school's going to be distinguished. The mastery index, they earned sixty-four point two four. For growth, they earned twenty point forty-four. And for readiness, they earned eight point eight eight points. Now, you look at the very last column, it breaks it down and tells you how many points they got for each individual indicator. So reading, reading is twenty-three point ten, math is twenty-three point thirty-two, science is ten point thirty-two, and then L progress is seven point five. If you add all those light blue columns up at the last, the very last column, it's going to equal to sixty-four point two four. That's how they got the numbers. You look at the growth, again, look at the last column, the ten for, um, the ten point zero three for reading, and the ten point four one for math. You add those together, you get the twenty point four four, and then the readiness is there just for the kind of accentism. So going into the second column, it just gives you a, um, this is how many points they can earn, the weight of the reading, the math, and the science. That's the second column. It's like a, it's like a key. And then the points earned is the index. Remember we had the eighty-two point two five? That's the index. How many points the students receive overall for reading. And then of course, the number of students who were tested. Then to get the possible, uh, the percent of possible points, you take the points earned column and divide it by the student column, and you will get the percent of possible points. You would notice it's over a hundred. You might be like, how do you get over a hundred? And you're going to see a lot of schools that have over a hundred because we have an index for mastery. It doesn't go, it goes above to the one point two. That's why you will see that some schools will have a percent of possible points above the one hundred, um, the mark, okay? Any questions on this chart? Absolutely.
Uh, the no, students column, you said that's the students taking the test. At the elementary school level, why is there a difference between reading and math, number of students? I mean, this may be an example, but is this a real-world example? Would there be a difference?
Yeah, no, this is a real-world example. It could be that a student was absent, or they didn't take the test. Or for reading, we do have students that can be exempt. So IL students can be exempt from the reading test. And so if this is a school that has a heavy, a heavy population of English learners, they do have that opportunity to be, to be exempt.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ricard?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed.
Thank you. Are parents still allowed to opt their children out of the exams at the elementary level? And how would that potentially impact our scores?
The parents always have the right to refuse testing. If a parent refused testing, that student would count as a non-participant, and they would, they would count as a zero.
I just want to re, repeat that. It doesn't come out of the denominator. It counts as a zero. The lowest it would count if you took the test and got below basic is a zero point two five. So every family that opts out significantly negatively impacts our score.
And it's at the elementary and middle school as well and opt-out? And, because I know for high school, it's graduation requirements, or...
Parents can refuse testing at any grade level. But we always advise the parents that, one, it will impact, you know, that. Then, two, if a student is in high school and you, and you have a parent refusal, the student may not graduate one time. Okay, the next chart is, uh, middle school, very similar. Again, the first column is the summary. The last column tells you how many points they were awarded for each individual indicator. The last column tells you how many points they were awarded for each individual indicator. And then you have the high school chart, very similar. Tells you how many points they earned total, the first column. The last column is how many points they earn per indicator. This page gives you an overview of the progress that the state has made from the beginning of implementing this new framework to where they are now. These are just resources that you can have if you needed to go deeper into the new framework. And as a reminder, the state is currently doing their final validation with our data. And as soon as they are finished, we will get it back and we have our final review. We know we're anxious to get our data, but we'd rather have delayed data that is correct than rushed data that is wrong. The last conversation on this slide is the proficiency cut scores. We know that the board is going to vote on this week on whether or not the cut scores could, this could be a zero year, where it would go in, which means the cut scores will go into effect back next fall. So looking at the state's page, their state agenda, their board agenda, they do have a vote on this week on whether or not the new proposed proficiency scores can start next fall and have this year as the preparation year. So we have to watch closely and see how the board, the state boards vote on that this week. Any questions?
I just have one thing.
Okay.
I know that we have, this might be more for superintending cameras than you. I know that we have vocalized our concerns with the new standards. But have, has there been some type of strategic conversation across the different divisions and how we could perhaps mobilize and provide feedback? Like, have we ever thought that far into perhaps giving additional feedback? Not pushback, but just feedback regarding some, some of the concerns corporately?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will say the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, which represents all one hundred and thirty for school superintendents in Virginia, has collectively put forth their feedback and their recommendations, which, to the board's credit, they are seriously considering. So as Valenta noted, they are likely to approve this year as a zero year, so to speak. So SOLs would still be on the four-hundred point threshold for proficiency this spring. And then next year, they would introduce a category called approaching, which would sit between proficient and basic. It would count as passing. And what they would do is over the next four years, gradually increase the level at which a student would be considered approaching, such that in the fourth year, the category would disappear and we would be at the new higher cut scores. That's something that VAS advocated for very strongly, and it looks like the board will likely adopt. So, so that is, I think, one clear manner in which that feedback has been taken into account. Of course, with the new governor coming in and likely new members of the Board of Education, of course, things could be fluid and change. But, but I would say that is the, the strongest reflection of aggregated.
Thank you. Well done. I know that that was certainly a lot to digest just as an individual, what to stand in front of us to explain it to us. I know you've done a lot of homework, so thank you so much for your presentation. All right, moving on to two point zero-two, receive an update on action profile five point one, facilities master plan process.
Good evening. Wow, that was loud. Good evening, board members, Mr. Camaras. We're going to talk very briefly about what we hope to outline for a plan to come up with a ten-year facilities plan. Starting with the slide that you have in front of you, I know you've seen this before, so I won't belabor the point. But this focuses on action five point one, which is really narrowing in on our facilities and our facilities footprint. The main thing that I want to say is the goal of this ten-year plan is to come up with as comprehensive of a plan as possible. We do not just want it to be, what are the marginal updates we make to capital in our existing buildings? We don't just want it to be about new builds. We don't just want it to be about responding to demographic shifts that we're seeing in the city. We want it to do all of those things. And we want to make sure that the community is involved in multiple different points along the way as we keep the board involved as well. And so that's really the focus of this presentation. I'm going to need to gra- oh, thank you, sir. And so that is our objective. We want a very comprehensive ten-year facilities plan, and we want to phase that out into a couple different sections. So starting out with capital improvement, then going into enrollment trends that we're seeing and how we respond to that, talking about the state of our facilities, and then finally coming up with a comprehensive recommendation for a facilities plan. So to talk a little bit more about the phases, what we have seen in other school systems across the country is these sorts of community-involved processes are most successful when you start by helping the community understand the sandbox that we have to play in. So if instead you go to the community and you say, what should we do? Every community rightly is going to say, I want a beautiful, brand-new building in my neighborhood. And they'd be correct, and I would agree with them. But what that ignores are the very significant funding constraints that we have for our facilities footprint. And so what we've seen in other cities where this has been done successfully is you start by building that community understanding of the context so that by the time you get to the stage where you are engaging around solutions, the community members who have been involved understand the constraints and aren't just saying, in this pie-in-the-sky world, but they're saying, in the world that we live in, here are the best use of these funds. And so that's why we're recommending we start with the first phase, which would be focused on helping people understand how the capital improvement plan process works. Breaking down the roughly, every ten years, the roughly two-hundred million dollars in capital dollars that we receive for larger projects, plus the annual allocation that we get from the city for capital projects, that is much more variable. And we know that the city has said that, that we should likely expect about two and a half million dollars per year for the next four years. So starting by helping people understand that. Phase two would be digging into the city and our enrollment trends. Where do we see schools that continue to grow over time? Where do we, as a school division, need to think about where we need to be more nimble and provide more space and more access because we're seeing more families end up there? If we go on to phase three, that would be talking about and really building on the strengths of the facilities condition assessment. But for this phase, it's really focused on helping folks understand two things. What should we, as a city, have a bar for the kind of school that every one of our students deserve? And given the under-investment that we have received for our facilities, where do we stand? And what is the best way for us to catch up to that bar to the degree that we are able to do that? So that by the time we get to phase four, we are using those three key inputs to develop a comprehensive plan that communities have been able to engage with what those constraints are and have really well-informed feedback to help us make that as strong as possible. So those would be the four phases. As you'll notice, for each one of those phases, we would build in and structure opportunities to hear feedback from the facilities and vacant property committee, the board, the community at large, and in particular, for the piece about the state of our facilities, thinking about collecting a group of expert folks in facilities who can validate our thinking about where our facilities are and what the most efficient way it is to get them to a higher standard. So that kind of top to bottom is what we're recommending between now and essentially next summer, start of next school year, so that we can have, to you all, a strategic and thoughtful ten-year facilities plan. I know there's more in the slide, but I'll leave it there for any questions that you all have for me.
Ms. Rizzi?
Oh, Mr. Harold, thank you for this. As far as the bullet under phase two stakeholders, family, staff, community members, would that be a kind of advisory group? You'll assemble and you'll kind of, at some point, share how those people will get selected?
So I, I think more broadly, we would like to make this as open to the community as possible. And so I think for the opportunities for the community to get involved, we envision doing that across the entire division in multiple locations at multiple times because we do not want to limit who gets to provide feedback on this just to a small selection of experts. To your point, we do have in phase three where we really want an external entity or a collection of people who have specific facilities expertise to be able to weigh in on that. We previously, under the prior COO, put forward a request for folks who wanted to join a committee. That committee was never actually formed. And so we would like to go back to that idea, especially for this phase three. But we'd like to reopen that up to make sure that we are collecting a diverse and representative group of folks who represent the Richmond area and who have specific expertise in facilities and facility strategy. So yes, for that phase three. But for the rest of them where we have lots of opportunities, we want that to be across the division and as open as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll also pick up on phase two. So phase two looks a little bit different from the other phases in that the bullets that we have here, and I know this is very early in the process, but the bullets we have here seem somewhat passive. So we're going to see what enrollment looks like. Are we going to tie in? Have we thought about tying in with other areas of RPS, other departments, with perhaps increasing the enrollment or influencing the enrollment trends as opposed to just monitoring? Because there are students that, that are not enrolled in RPS that live in the city, so.
Yes, so we definitely want to think about this in terms of where we can pick up more market share, where we can increase our enrollment. But I do think, as a grounding point, what we, what, when you look at other cities who have done this, the most reliable predictor of the future is past data and data trends. So I, I think as a starting point, we want to make sure that the historic data and trends, if there is a school that is significantly increasing enrollment over time in its history or doing the opposite, we want to start with that as the assumption and, because that is the most predictive future, and we want, need to make sure that we are prepared for that. I think there are opportunities to layer on top of that areas where we can grow and we can get more aggressive and we can be more thoughtful about how we bring more people into RPS. But that's where you start getting into the speculative type of work. And I think this needs to be primarily grounded in the most reliable data that we have.
Mr. Jafari?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Harold, as we look at the needs, the infrastructure needs, district to district, I was wondering if you have any consideration, would be willing to consider, I guess, how rolling attendance zoning process, how that would impact and maybe reduce the need? Let's say you have a, a rising need in one district that can be perhaps controlled better, at least in the interim, by adjusting the zoning attendance. Something like that, would it, would it work? And your insight, how would it look like?
Yeah, I, I know the idea of attendance zones is very sensitive. I, I think we want this to be as comprehensive of a process as possible. We're going into it, we do not assume what the outcomes are. And so I think something like thinking about combining zones or being willing to talk about that is definitely on the table. I don't want to pre-assume that we either will or will not change zones boundaries. But I think you're right to say that it should be part of the discussion, especially as we are thinking about the changes in where people live across the city.
Thank you for the presentation, and I, I look forward to when this starts to go underway. Obviously, you know, in the ninth district, we have a severe area of overpopulation. And I know that that's something that would be considered as you look at enrollment. But what I will say is that sometimes the challenge is when you engage with stakeholders, that there is not always the same amount of participation based upon the district. And I just want to ensure that there's consideration to the need, regardless of the feedback that you perhaps may be receiving from certain districts, to ensure that even if there's not a level of advocacy there, that you're identifying the need based upon the data and responding accordingly.
Absolutely, yes, I completely agree.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have received an update for facilities and vacant property committee. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And committee members, please feel free. For the past several months, facilities vacant properties committee has been meeting to discuss vacant properties that are, that continue to be in our portfolio. We have met with Mr. Hathaway, our director of construction, before he left, who has been, was great, and now Mr. Harold. And we have both listened to their expertise and discussed what we felt were important considerations before making these recommendations. So if it is or seems reasonable, what I'll do is just go through each property and highlight what our recommendations are. And then if you have questions, certainly I can respond or any member of our committee, which would be Mr. Percival, Ali, Faruk, Mr. Faruk, I'm sorry, it's been a long day, Mr. Faruk, and Mr. Jafari. All right. So we have updates first. Arthur Ash advised property was transferred to the city in January and was vacated on May first. So Arthur Ash is no longer in our portfolio, it belongs to the city. The Moore Street School, which is at Carver. Right now, the transfer continues to be in process, but we now have a clear path to how and when that will be completed. And we are waiting to have a final quitclaim deed, which will be presented to us in December, and we will be able to vote on it and finally move Moore Street along. All right. Recommendations, Noral Annex. We recommend transferring this property to the city via surplus and quitclaim it, largely because the property is not large enough to build a school. And it's, it's actually probably going to be more beneficial for us to quitclaim it and then receive whatever funding the city receives from it to go back into our budget. And to just reiterate how that process works, RPS does not officially own property, but we do have control of these properties. Once we quitclaim them to the city, our agreement is that the city will actually, upon sale of that property, give us the funds that they make and they return to our budget. And so with Noral, we recommend that that's what we do. But thirteen acres, you may be aware, there is a structure on that property that is in horrible condition. It's, it has been deemed unsafe. Mr. Hathaway has described instances where they have had to deal with critters that get in there. And once a fox got caught up in a fence and had to be extracted. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a dangerous situation. The community has some, and Mr. Ali, Mr. Faruk, you could probably help me with explaining this, but the committee, the community seems to have some attachment to this structure. But it has been sitting there for years, and no one has acted upon anything. And at one time, they said they wanted to move it, but that, they have not moved forward with that. And so our recommendation is to give the community a term of one year to, you know, perhaps move the structure if they are able to. And if that does not happen, we need to go ahead and move forward and demolish the building and retain that green space for. and move forward and demolish the building and retain that green space for our, our students. Okay? Any questions so far?
Mr. Hedgepath?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. For 13 acres, I, I know that there's been a lot of concern that I have heard about, not just particularly this building, but tearing down old buildings. And, and, you know, and then we see modern structures that have, you know, arguably no character or lack, less character than, than old structures. And maybe this is the history teacher in me that's, that's, that's also talking. But I, I appreciate the, the term of one year. I just wonder how much, how aggressively we've worked and pursued, working with Historic Richmond and other entities that can, can really turn properties around with, with some community support. And I, I just don't know if, if that's been explored at this point or if that, if the year that we're hoping to, to give will, you know, be for that.
Thank you. It is my understanding that this has been a discussion that has taken place for many years and no one has done anything. And including work with, you know, historical preservation groups. The biggest problem with this one is that this building is literally like in the worst shape you could imagine. Like it is about to fall down. I don't know that it's even salvageable. And so I don't, I mean, what we're going to do is allow the community one more year to decide what to do with it. But it is a hazard and can't stay there much long. Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Farouk. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Farouk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will just quickly, for 13 acres specifically, give some context, which is if you're to look up this property on the map, it is literally on, the tract is literally on the same property line as Holton Elementary School, which is a large elementary school in Northside. And so my children don't attend Holton, but we often go to the playground, play soccer, and it's like a haunted house just sitting there. Like it's right next to the soccer field and the playground. And so that's another danger where children are always fascinated by this building. They want to know who lives there, what's going on in there. So keeping children safe from this decaying structure is important. And it's also the reason why no one's come along and bought it up. I mean, no one can really live there, right? Like even if you had a ton of money, you would rather sink it into a property that's in a neighborhood with neighbors, not on a school where you'd have to, you know, constantly be where, it's an awkward place to have a house, basically. So to preserve this building, you would either have to spend the money to move this house somewhere else or something like that. So I think our options are just limited in terms of what can actually be done if one were interested in preserving the house. And, and I've said this many times, if we had the money, I would love for us, RPS, to preserve this house and use it for some, you know, educational purpose. Perhaps we'll do specialized instruction. Maybe it's office space. Maybe it's like a retreat center or what, meeting space, whatever. But like, we don't have infinite money where we can do that. And so, you know, I, personally, I think there are people in Northside that, that are dedicated to preserving the history and it's surrounded by beautiful historic neighborhoods. Our superintendent lives not far from there. And so yes, there are people in the community that are very interested in preserving the history and, and the beautiful architecture of this house, but I don't see it really being all that practical. And so, but at the risk of gathering their, of becoming the target of their ire, I would rather see that this structure be demolished and that land be used to supplement the place space that is actively used. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 13 acres, years ago before it's set there as a, a building now to be considered for demolition, I thought it was one of the prettiest places with Richmond Public Schools. It is a house, two-story house. And then later Richmond Public Schools acquired the house and it was used for special education offices and meetings. That's where we would go for our meetings citywide. So driving that long driveway in Northside, in the heart of the city of Richmond, I, I thought it was a beautiful space. So it was truly a letdown that it was allowed just to go into decay as it is. My question is, and that, that makes us, makes me also think in terms of as we get new, this is Holton was built, it was already decaying before that, I, I wonder why that property wasn't cared for. But my question is, Ms. Rizzi, you mentioned that maybe one, I, I want to make sure I'm clear. The point of negotiating or collaborating with the community and how that would be set up. I love the idea of green space. I think that corner is the ideal spot, as Mr. Farouk stated, connecting to the playground and beyond. That's, that's awesome. So are we saying that, are you suggesting that our school would maintain that green spot if that happens? Or our school system, I should say, or that we would give it to the city and then they would decide that? What's the plan of action? I like the idea. There may be a good point of negotiating per se.
You know, our, our recommendation is that we keep it on our roster, on our books. So that, you know, we, we can decide what we want to do in the future with that property. It's very nice property. It's huge green space and has lots of potential. And so the recommendation would be to keep it with RPS.
Follow-up. I think that's a great idea. I'm thinking about the new apartment complex. It's been there four or five years now where soccer was played and tennis was played. But when the new apartments were built, as they are popping up throughout the city of Richmond, that green space acres, we lost that. So I don't know where the children play soccer or whatever now, but I like the idea and I hope that is considered in this area, the opportunity to have shaded trees and, and opportunities for our soft areas for our students to, or people in the city, period, to be able to enjoy. Thank you for this report.
Thank you.
Just have one question.
Yes.
Who would be on the hook for the demolition cost? And how would that be assessed?
That's a good question. I believe we would be.
Have we assessed what that might cost?
We have not at this point.
Okay. Something to consider as we move into next year, well, not this up and coming year's budget, but if we're only given the community a year to consider, that's just something that we might want.
Yeah. And you know, that, that is primarily driven by the fact that that site is so unsafe. All right. Next, we've got Roughen Road. Oh, I'm sorry, Skip Thompson. Can't do that. We recommend exploring solicitation of a third party to conduct a feasibility study for renovations. And the recommendation from our admin team has been to hold it as a swing space. There's also a potential that it could be, become another school. What we do know is that that school has excellent bones. At one time, there was a consideration to demolish it, but from what we hear from Mr. Hathaway, that school has very strong, strong infrastructure. It is, it has great bones. There are materials in that school that would cost a ton of money if we had to buy them from scratch that are in good condition. And so our recommendation would be to hold on to Thompson and explore renovation.
Mr. Hedgepath?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. The, in addition to what you said, I wanted to share also that Principal Massa of Huguenot High School has said that the green space around Thompson is being used regularly by our, our Falcons. So I wanted the community to know that that space is really important to, to, to HHS. In addition to, to what you mentioned before, certainly, and I know that my other Southside colleagues can, can attest that we are growing and we need, we're going to need another school in, in Southside, probably multiple. And so I think that it's a, a smart idea. The, the neighborhood, the community would really like to see action in that building again. And so I think that having it as a swing space as a starting point to then maybe have, you know, having a new school there, whether that's a middle or elementary school or something else. I think that's really great. So thank you for this recommendation.
Mr. Percival?
And, and just to add a little accent, because the question was asked. So as we're looking at spending dollars into Mr. Hedgepath's point, and we need space, very rough, back of the envelope kind of math, it, it would not be free, obviously, to renovate the school, but we're looking at a cost of about two-thirds roughly of a new school build.
Now we have Roughen Road. What we recommend here is retaining this property and soliciting a third party to conduct a feasibility study for building a school. It is a small property, but we do, we are at the moment in a state where we are, our city is updating zoning laws. And it may be least, less restrictive now in terms of what we can build on a smaller parcel of land. Also, we could explore building up. And, you know, there, there may very well be an opportunity to build a school on this property, even though it is a fairly small building. And so that is the recommendation we'd make is to retain it and conduct a feasibility study on the property. And then what you have is the slideshow basically that follows, or the slides that follow, just highlight details about each one of the properties, including any utility costs that we are currently paying. So please review that and let us know if you have any questions. But that is pretty much all that we have. And these are our recommendations.
Ms. Ricard?
For Thompson and Roughen Road, what, do you have a, a proposed timeline for the feasibility studies? Thinking about 13 acres was unfortunately left to just decline. We just don't want this to happen with these schools. I also know feasibility studies cost money. So I didn't know if there was any discussion on that.
I mean, I, I think, not yet, but I think that if you all accept these recommendations, that needs to be a topic of discussion fairly soon. Yes.
Mrs. Jafari?
Thanks, Madam Chair. My colleague, Ms. Ricard, if I could just follow up. We've entertained a number of different recommendations for the property. And there are a number of factors that have impacted the decision that we reached. Chief amongst them is the fact that we really do not feel that we could get a return on anything if we just reclaim, pass it on to the city. Equally as important is the fact that that area, that school was put there for a reason and it was put there 15 years ago or so too. It was closed 15 years ago, but the school was built to serve that area. And so right now, that area is not being served. As a result, many of the preschoolers and the elementary schoolers are being sent out of district, out of zone. And that's another reason that we've decided to, to, to hold on to it, at least in the interim. And we constantly, we revisit it each time somebody comes in and maybe have us, has a suggestion. We've also entertained a suggestion that we could basically pass it back on to the city for use along with TV Smith as a parking area, what have you. As it, as has been our practice here on the board, we try to come up with solutions and not just stonewall, you know, what others may be trying to do that's positive for the community. And in that particular instance, my alternate suggestion would be to use the old TV Smith building since they have a new one. And that's, that would provide the new space for parking. But in the interim, I just think that current and future demands and, and the type of explosion of the family and the growth in that area demands that in the interim, we just hold on to the property.
Ms. Ricard?
Sorry. I just want to be clear that I wasn't advocating for releasing them. I was more just asking, I think this, these are great decisions and I just want to know for feasibility, yeah, how can we move forward on that? Agree with everything the committee's presented.
Yes, I think we could move forward pretty quickly with, you know, we'd, we'd have to look into whether we need to do RFPs for the feasibility studies, but we can get those going pretty quickly once we, you know, move to accept these recommendations that that was, that's what you choose to do. And then, of course, we'll have to talk about cost.
Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, just a little bit of context as an example for Roughen Road. The Facilities Committee, we kind of came into Roughen Road with a, an assumption that it was probably too small to build a school on. That was sort of how we led into that. But it's four acres and after doing a little bit of analysis, realized that as an example, Fox Elementary is on 3.6 acres. So we, we know we can fit a school on there. Just a little bit of context.
Great work, Committee. This is really great information for us to easily digest. I just have one question. Norrell Annex, that's not currently occupied, correct? Or is it?
Go ahead.
No, it is not. And it's important for the public to know there are two buildings named Norrell. One is Norrell Elementary, which is a large building that is used at capacity, not as a school, but as offices for our academic team. There is a separate, much smaller building called Norrell Annex, which is about a block away. It is in major disrepair and would cost several million dollars to renovate it. That is the property that the committee is recommending the surplus to the city for potential residential development, given the need for, for more housing all across the city, but, but certainly in that area. And if I could just add about the Roughen Road site, we've had many conversations at this table and in other venues about the need for more early childhood seats. And we need them the most on the South Side. And so that would potentially be an ideal location for a new RPS preschool, where we could serve more kiddos, if not an elementary school as well. But that is certainly one idea that I think would certainly benefit the community. Of course, cost is always an issue, but we wholeheartedly support the mission of retaining.
Thank you. Moving right along to 3.02, receive an update on Woodville Elementary School.
Good evening again. We are going to talk about Woodville and we are also going to talk about CTE. And so I, I wanted to give you all an update on where things stand with each one of those projects. So as you'll see on the slide in front of you right now, Woodville is the furthest along. We have completed the design phase. We have construction costs. We have design estimates. And so we know all in what that would take to complete the project. The challenge that we face right now is with the current capital dollars that we have, we do not have enough money to be able to complete that project in full. And so we're at a bit of a holding pattern, not having sufficient money to move forward. So this project, as you'll see, as you can see, has a lot more development in terms of the, the design, the proposal. We have mockups, but we don't have complete funding. The second project that I wanted to give you all an update on is the Maury Street CTE Center. Sometimes people refer to it as the Altria Site. It was the facility that's currently being used for our warehouse, for our procurement team and a couple other teams. But it was always designed to eventually become a CTE center. So we've worked with KEI to do a feasibility study and they've been making really good progress on what that site could look like. What you see here is one of four alternatives that the CTE team and the academic team has had a lot of opportunities to weigh in on for what they would want. Essentially, a relocated RTC at this new site to look like. And then if you go to the next slide, you can see some of the high-level costs. Not surprisingly, high schools are significantly more expensive than elementary schools. So that's why the cost picture is significantly higher. And you'll see that we have, a, a lot of these numbers are very tentative because we are not as far along with this project. But KEI and others have been really helpful with us in developing what we would want this site to look like. One thing to note though, is that because part of the assumption for the CTE center would be relocating our district's data facility from the current RTC site to this new site. data facility from the current RTC site to this new site, that would mean that we could, if we wanted to, we could explore disposal of that as an asset, which is a very local property. And so if we considered that as an option, that could give us sufficient funding in a, and essentially a swap or some sort of money-making opportunity with the RTC site to be able to begin Phase 1. So that's why Phase 1 of this is actually more expensive than Woodville, but would actually be able to be done if we were to do the approach of the land swap with where RTC is currently. The other thing that I wanted to make sure this board was aware of, if we go to the next slide, is that based on the directions that we have received from the prior board, and I know this is a different composition than is on the board right now, but a prior board gave us direct instruction that the, the recommendation that they passed was, first was the Richmond High School of the Arts, second was the RTC Center relocating to the Maury Street facility, and then third in that order would be Woodville. And so based on that, that's why we are moving ahead most speedily with the CTE site, the, the Maury Street site. That's all I wanted to share with you, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for this report this evening. My question is regarding Woodville. This is probably a question regarding the financial piece, because we know the law that we wait, and with terrorists, terrorists and everything else going on, the amount would change. So I know we haven't discussed it as a board, but where are we per se, or will we address the opportunity to revisit a timeline? Or, because this is going to change, what's currently in place. So is there a plan, or are we working on a plan, or will we work on a plan per se to address the deficit? Or I know our PTA president from Woodville sent a request regarding a grant, which still wouldn't be enough to cover. So right now, where are we financially, knowing that the CTE building is above us? What's, what's the plan of action?
So yes, we, we are about $40 million short at this point. Fortunately, some of the federal grants that we had applied for have since either been canceled or rescinded. Fortunately, I don't think the federal picture is going to improve. We have already received $12 million from the state, which means it's unlikely that we would receive additional funding from the state, because they typically fund other projects before they come back around, which means we would really need to identify the funding from the city. Our next batch of funding or capital for new construction from the city comes in 2029. That's $200 billion. So to connect two conversations, Mr. Harrell's earlier presentation about the 10-year master facilities plan would contemplate how to use that $200 billion over that time period. First up on that list would be Woodville, the access to those funds. Unfortunately, they could not be available until FY '29. That being said, we continue to have ongoing conversations with the city about what our priorities are, and I think continuing to talk with them about, for example, properties that we are surplus. I would like us to be in a position of, rather than waiting to see what the city is able to do with a property, I'd rather us take the approach we took with York Tharash, whereby we actually enter into a written agreement on the front end and say, look, we'll surplus this, do whatever you think you want to do with it, but right now, we want to have a written agreement that we are going to receive X million dollars from the city, which is in essence what we did with our Tharash. We are supposed to get, I believe it's a minimum of $5 million once that property is developed as part of the Diamond District. I think we could have a conversation with the city to say, well, it's probably going to be worth more than $5 million when the city gets around to that phase. So cut us a check now for $5, and we could put that toward, but I think there's a couple of things that we might be able to do like that. I also think, and I know this was a subject of great debate, but I think we would have more success with the city in making those kinds of appeals if we reconsidered the potential merging of Woodville and Fairfield. I know there's a lot of strong feelings about that, pro and con, but, but the reality is, if we were to only build the Woodville site, the Fairfield site would not realistically be developed probably for another 15 or 20 years, just given the scarcity of resources. And so I think if we're also able to demonstrate openness to that potential efficiency, that might unlock some additional resources for us from the city. So again, I don't think there's one source of funding that's going to close the gap. I think it's about a whole bunch of $5 million and $10 million solutions that we're working on to try to get there. But it is, it's not going to be developed. We're turning over every possible one.
Mr. Jafari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Harrell, and again, is probably equally, uh, to a superintendent. Uh, but my question is, at what stage of completion are we on the Woodville project?
You mean in the planning process?
So that it hasn't, hasn't been any broken ground or anything?
No, 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 we've not broken ground. We, we have quite a few steps in the planning process, including the design process done, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We have not even yet done an RFP for construction, so, which we, we can't do until we have the funding to actually execute on the construction.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have, speaking of funding, receive an update on work of the school funding formula working group. We first had this conversation as a, just recently at our budget committee, committee, sorry, um, what was that? Couple weeks ago. So this has been underway. As some of you may know, that the city adopted resolution, a resolution requesting that the CAO convene a joint working group that represented RPS, City Council, and the city administration to develop a formalized school funding formula. And so myself and Vice Chair Percival were a part of that committee, along with Superintendent Camaras and, and folks from both the city side as well as city council. And ultimately, the conversation is around revisiting how we determine the budget that we receive year over year. As you know, in most cases, as it is currently structured, we typically don't know until like May of that year, after it's kind of gone through a lot of iterations from different parties, what we would end up with in terms of a budget as it relates to the city. And so what they are trying to accomplish is to really take some of the guesswork out of it, so that we already walk into the next budget cycle knowing what type of funding would be allotted to us. And so we started this conversation. It was a course of three different meetings, where we just tried to come up with a tentative formula that would assess some of the needs as it relates to RPS, understanding that from a city perspective, they have other, obviously, responsibilities in terms of, you know, RPD. They have, you know, other, other opportunities or obstacles that they face in terms of how they give what to who. And so this would also help them to determine from their standpoint, but, but ideally, they would be able to provide. And so we talked about a couple of different things in our last meeting. Some of us talked about perhaps leaning away from percentages. Some questioned if that would be appropriate. But we did land on, I believe it was eight topics, if you go to page maybe? Yeah. And so what we came up with as a group, I will tell you that, what I do appreciate about the conversation that we've had, everyone is committed to the work in trying to do what's best for the children in the city of Richmond. We, we had very collaborative conversations with all parties, and so it really was positive conversations all around. And so the funding, the funding formula consists of eight different topics, and you can see them there. I'm not going to read them all out loud. I'm not going to call them all out. But essentially, what they would do is from year to year, assess based upon these different topics or line items, how we would determine what the budget will be. And so we would have a baseline, let's just say, for example, $55,000, I mean, $55 million. I'm just throwing it out there. And so from year to year, we would say, okay, we would have a baseline of $55 million for the said RPS school cycle, but also considering other differentials, like if there is a bill that year, if there's a one-off opportunity that might need some additional focus. And so this is kind of what we've laid out. We talked about it at a last discussion. And so our, this time around was more so to ensure that the public had a eye, opportunity to digest it, read it, and receive feedback from the community, obviously, but also from board members to really get a pulse check on where we stood. And so before I open it up, I'd like to stop to see if there's anything that Superintendent Camaras or Vice Chair Percival would like to add, and then we can start the conversation.
I think that was a great summary.
Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Equally, I think you, you covered quite a bit of what we did. The, the only accent I'll put on here is that people may remember the big public kickoff that we had, that we all attended, and then we had the three follow-up meetings with that. And where we got with that, with this data, is all that hard work to get to a starting point. And the starting point is, this will be the framework. So the framework still needs to be constructed, but these will be the ingredients for the recipe to, to get that framework done. And so we, we did have some inputs into this. Some of this was brought to us. Some of it, we gave some feedback to, especially, especially at the end there, the investments in the infrastructure and the student need profiling. These are some of the things that really stand out to us, working in the schools every day. Whereas coming at it from a city standpoint, it's easy to look at fiscal capacities and, and budget line items and so forth. But, you know, we're looking at some of the, some of the, from when the, within the schools, looking out the windows, kind of, a framework-type thing. So that's kind of where we are, is, is, we'll see what comes next out of the framework, and, and we'll work from there and massage a little bit more as well.
Question. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was there any mention of a reference to the children's funding project that they conducted last year? Any idea whether they use the results of that, or was there any mention of it at all?
There was no mention of it that I recall.
Thank you.
No, I, I would only add to that, that they were coming at it more from a, who else is doing this? Norfolk, for example. Let's take a look at how Norfolk took their budget line items, and, you know, X percent of this line item added X percent of this line item. That was sort of the approach.
Mr. Cameron?
One data point that I think it is important for the board to have and the public, I do appreciate the city sharing the funds that are available for use on things like schools and roads and such, and the funds that are not available for those things because they're required by statute for other things. So the city, on paper, has a roughly $3 billion budget. That includes all capital expenditures, but it also includes statutory requirements, things that they collect fees on, and then those fees go right back to pay for the services. The operating budget for the city is really about $1.1 billion. What we've seen over the last several years is of that $1.1 billion, and actually, it's a little bit less than that, because there are some things they have to back out from that as well. But bottom line is about 32% of the funds that are generally available have been going to RPS. That has been relatively constant. So while the city, to their credit, and we are grateful for, has been increasing pretty significantly the amount of money that RPS receives, the percentage of that total pie has been relatively constant at around 32%. And, and that should make sense, because the city's coffers have gotten larger as property taxes have increased. And to the city's credit, we've shared in that expansion of the city's coffers at around 32%. So it's just a helpful, just benchmarking data point. There's a spreadsheet attached to this letter that lays all that out, that you can take a look at. The city shows it, I think, for the last 10 or so years. And so I would encourage the board and the public just to take a look at that. It's, it's a very helpful way just to kind of wrap your head around the city's investments over the last several years.
I would also like to add that this in no way stops us from continuing to advocate for the things that we need as a school division. This just gives us a better opportunity and line of sight going into the next budget cycle, at least what the, we know what that, that bare minimum will be. And so it does kind of help, because I know that sometimes around the May timeframe, where we're having to make decisions after we've finally gotten a clear picture, and we're already about to start into that next school year. And so this does help us get a better line of sight, but it does not, not stop us from the advocacy work that we will continue to do, to, you know, echo the, the needs of our, our students and, and Richmond Public Schools. Ms. Ricard?
I know you mentioned that Norfolk Public Schools uses this. Are there other school districts in Virginia that are using a funding formula?
There are, and we, we did ask for some other school districts, because of, one of the points that was made during these meetings is that going to the eastern shore with the federal footprint down there, they're getting a lot of budget passed through from the federal government. So using the same line items and the same percentages may not be an apples-to-apples comparison. So we did ask for some other data from other districts.
And if it was possible to share that with the full board, I know you have been. It's just, this is new, and I would be very interested to see how it actually plays out with real numbers and situations, just so we can prepare for it.
Absolutely. And we've, we've requested it, have not received it yet. I was sharing with the board during the Finance Committee meeting that I engaged a, another school board that went through a funding formula cycle, and so they're going to give us everything, including the kitchen sink. And so once I receive that information, I'd be sure to forward it so that we can all assess it together, and certainly, if it makes sense, to bring them here or to have them share what their experience was. I think that would be helpful for us in making our decision. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Is there any indication that districts who have moved to a funding formula process are happy with it? happy with it?
The person that I engaged, yes, it actually was a very positive experience for them. I mean, they went as far as to say that they have more money than they know what to do with. I don't know if that will be our situation. But again, it's all about, you know, realistically, as my, you know, Vice Chair Percival said, comparing apples to apples because, you know, where we might be aligned in some areas, there might be some other outliers like federal funding, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that may not be as close in proximity to us. So we'll explore that. But yes, they did have a positive experience. Mr. Percival.
And I'll just add on to that, also adding on to superintendent's comments before, to the city's credit, which was great, is that if you're constantly funding at a percentage level, that's great. Thirty-two percent of an operating budget is great, except when you live in times like we live in right now where optimism is hard to come by, and fiscally, we're looking at probably some difficult years, at least the next year or two. Percentages can also work against you. And so to the city's credit, they indicated that they were really trying to make sure that we weren't going to backslide on funding. So if we can at least maintain, and in lean years like we're expecting to at least maintain the levels that we are, sometimes zero is a hero, as they say in financial markets.
I would just also like to add that, you know, obviously, there are pros and cons to this, you know, as we think about, obviously, the commitment of the city not to go backward. We know that the cost of living rises year over year. We know that, you know, insurance premiums increase year over year. There's a lot to be said of that. So even if we were to go into, for example, this next budget cycle with the bare minimum, we already know we're walking into a deficit. And so there's still opportunity to really look at, and we already have been talking to everyone we know possibly that we can talk to that influences budget one way, state or form, from city level to state level. But as we continue to move forward, that's something that we're still going to have to consider as we look into next year, understanding that there's going to be some lean years coming forward. We also need to be thinking about how we're going to make up the difference of what we may not be able to receive. Very much. Moving right along, receive for first read, collective bargaining resolution update. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am thrilled to bring forward to you a revised set of updates to our collective bargaining resolution. The document before you reflects the agreements that the administration and our union partners struck last week. I want to recognize publicly our union partners for the hard work and diligence that they dedicated to this process. As I have shared, neither the unions nor the administration, I think, achieved everything that they had hoped, but that is the essence of compromise. And I do believe the draft that is before you will both serve our employees well, protect the school system financially, and upholds both the spirit and the letter of collective bargaining here in Richmond. A few notes, some of the areas that were the most significant sticking points were actually solved by recommendations from our union partners, and I'll just highlight two of those for the board and for the public. One was the question of what should be the breadth of topics that are discussed during negotiations? And we had been discussing various categories, elements of categories and such. One of our union partners recommended that we shift away from the notion of topics, which can be quite expansive and can include a whole host of different items, and instead refocus our thinking around the notion of discrete proposals. So, for example, a topic could be wages and benefits, which could have many different possible discussion items, as distinct from a proposal, which, for example, could be a two percent raise. And so we settled on each side bringing forth ten discrete, specific proposals for consideration, which would be exchanged thirty days in advance of negotiation, which would give each side an opportunity to review those proposals and be prepared to discuss them. On our side, it would enable us to do some cost modeling and therefore be able to start the negotiations, basically with a head start, which helps us do things more efficiently, which is one of our goals. So I'm grateful to our union partners for suggesting that I think it's one that strikes the right balance. The second was how to resolve disputes when there are grievances and they can't be settled after multiple steps. We had discussions about a third party, panel mediation, and so on. And again, one of our union partners recommended a practice that they have found to be quite helpful, and that is a committee of four individuals, two members from the union, two members from the administration, who work to try to resolve the issue. If a majority can resolve it, it's resolved. And then if they can't, it goes to the board for final determination. In our partner's estimation, about ninety-plus percent of issues ended up getting solved that way, which is certainly something that we can aspire to. And so, again, I think that was a very reasonable recommendation that serves all of our interests well, and so we adopted it. I know there has been some change of heart since we reached that agreement, and that is unfortunate, but I continue to respect and appreciate all of our union partners and invite them all to uphold the agreements that we struck last week, and intend to bring this forth to you tomorrow night for a final. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Fur.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron, do you mind just briefly summarizing the number of meetings you had and roughly who was at the meetings, just so people have a clear idea of who was involved in the negotiations? Thank you.
I have a document that outlines that, and if you'll give me just a minute, I'll pull that up and share that with the board and the public. I think we can safely say there have been roughly a dozen meetings over the course of the last couple of months of various sorts. The unions had requested for this most recent round that we met with them jointly, which we were happy to do. All of our union partners, except Launa, chose to participate, and so at nearly every conversation, the Teamsters and REA were represented. There are two Teamsters units, and typically, both were represented.
Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameron, is that a document that you could upload to the board docs?
Yes, ma'am.
I know the question of access changed a lot, and so I'm reading through the language now, but I didn't know if it was possible for you to briefly summarize where we landed with that.
Yep. Where the current language is that no formal meetings would occur during school hours, but informal conversations, even if a union partner wanted to make themselves available in a lunchroom to answer questions and such, all fine and acceptable, but no formal meetings during the work.
And no permission is needed on behalf of the building administrator or?
They, we are requiring advance notice, but not permission. They would follow the same rules as any other visitor did.
Mr. Percival.
I would just like to add on there, because I know there was some pushback from the unions, that is also the policy that we as board members follow, so it's not just a visitors' policy, that we provide notice both to the superintendent and to the principal at the school before arriving at a school.
Thank you so much. You know, I know this has been a very arduous process, but I do appreciate the effort by both the administration, the unions. You know, when we made the decision to extend the time, we heard loud and clear that some of the unions felt rushed, they needed to digest the information, and certainly wanted to give them the opportunity to reconvene and discuss what was outlined. I was very excited on, was it Wednesday or Thursday? Wednesday to hear that the most important thing that I was excited about was to hear that a lot of the new updates were inspired by the unions themselves. And that was important to me, to ensure that their voices were heard and that this document really reflected some of the things that they were extremely passionate about. And so I really do appreciate everyone who has worked towards the resolution. We know that this document is not, as you said, you know, no one walks away feeling as though they've gotten everything that they've wanted. But true collaboration is when both sides can come together and really come to some type of consensus. And so the biggest thing to take away from this is that collective bargaining process is protected, and we will continue to ensure that every worker has the opportunity to voice their concerns and be heard. Thank you. All right. Moving right along to? Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On pages sixteen and seventeen of this document, going to numbers five and six, and then number two under C, I know that this was, some people were concerned that this would restrict freedom of speech, so there was some additional language added. Mr. Cameron, do you mind just summarizing again? Why is this language in here? What is it that we're trying to prevent that isn't already covered by, you know, existing policy?
Thank you. Mr. Cameron.
Yes, it's intended to prevent the types of organizing activities and other activities that if they were to occur during the regular school day, could be disruptive. And we have seen in one particular instance where that has occurred with one of our partners. Fortunately, I wish we could not have to create guardrails for one case, but that's the nature of these documents. Have to protect the school division as a whole. We added the language to be absolutely crystal clear. This is in absolutely no way a restriction on any individual's freedom of speech, and we will continue to support that to the fullest extent of our power.
So just to clarify, this new language, and I'm speaking on about page sixteen, for the members of the public, on page sixteen, numbers five and six, and then page seventeen, number two, this is not really guidelines meant to police individuals, but to police collective action. So if one person is maybe complaining about something happening at work or having an animated discussion with a coworker about workplace conditions, that's not what this language is meant to police?
No. In fact, we welcome folks sharing their feedback about the good, the bad, and the ugly, as they always do, and no, this does not in any way infringe on that at all.
I'm actually glad you brought that up. I did have one clarifying question that was brought to me prior, page sixteen, at number five, interfere in the day-to-day operations of RPS or engage in behavior that negatively impacts the working conditions or environment of an RPS employee, which shall in no way be construed as a restriction on an individual's constitutionally protected freedom of expression. I did receive some feedback that the wording for five was a little bit vague in terms of, and their concern was raised as it relates to concerns of retaliation, when it says negatively impact work, working conditions, they felt that it was a little bit too broad. Can you kind of share some insight onto the rationale behind that?
Yeah, and I also do want to note, B5 on sixteen is not about individual employee. It is about the exclusive representative in its meetings. So it's not about an individual who is expressing their concerns or whatnot. It is about the exclusive representative as an entity, causing a disruption that impedes the work of the school. So I think that is the salient distinction. I will give an example of where there was a situation with one of our partners where the partner spent significant amounts of time essentially organizing around certain grievances that they were having, which then spilled over into the tour of duty, which impacted the ability of those members to fully conduct their, that is what we are talking about. We are not in any way, shape, or form talking about expressing their concerns. And again, this is only about the exclusive representative as an entity. This is not about the members expressing themselves.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have 3.05, receive for first read, program of studies.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Camaras. I am here as we normally do every year. We're going to do the first read of our program of studies, which we need in order to start our process of doing master schedule for the upcoming school year. And so this will be the first read. We would hope for your approval in December so we can get started on this very important work. Candace Vinnie Chaplin, our manager of college and career pathways, is here to do the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Camaras, board members. Thank you for having me here today. Thank you. To present the program of studies. The program of studies is a document, it's actually two documents, that outline all of the courses and programs within the secondary realm of Richmond Public Schools. The purpose of the program of studies is to put together all of the approved courses as the all of the approved courses as the sole source of truth in terms of what those courses are for Richmond Public Schools. We use the Program of Study to develop master schedules across all schools, and all of those courses are created to have a pathway for every student to graduate from high school. There are a number of new courses that have been proposed, and the administration is now proposing that we add these courses to the Program of Studies. Those courses include two second-year international baccalaureate courses. One is psychology and the other is environmental systems and societies. For these two courses, they already have their first-year component, and so this brings them to the second year in the diploma program. The next set of courses are in the mathematics area. Algebra I Part 1 and Algebra I Part 2. The purpose of having a Part 1 and Part 2 is to provide a runway for students who may need additional time, deeper learning opportunities, remediation, and time to really understand math in its sequence to be successful with algebra. This does not negate the fact that some students may choose to just simply take Algebra 1. That course will still remain in the Program of Studies, and that is an option for students as well. Algebra 1 Foundations to support our students who need help and time with retesting for the Algebra SOL. And then we have the Geometry Series, Part 1 and Part 2, similar to the Algebra 1, Part 1 and Part 2. Again, students do have the option of doing geometry as a standalone course as well. Additionally, we have some courses in the CTE realm. Medication Aid, Principles of Technology 1 and 2, Patient Care Technician. There is also a proposal for the Latin American and Caribbean Ethnic Studies Course to be reflective of our very diverse students and make sure that there isn't a gap in representation for students seeing the world from their point of view. Those were all of the courses that would be added. The course that would be removed is Intensified Algebra. That course really falls along the same lines as that Algebra 1 Part 1, Part 2 sequence. What we have found is that the course itself has had consistently low participation, and it has not been implemented with fidelity or consistency. Some other things of note. We have three courses that the VDOE has updated course codes for. Those courses still exist, but their course code will change from what we have had previously. Those courses are AP Seminar, AP Research, and IB Environmental Systems. And the DOE has put together Nurse Aid 1 and Nurse Aid 2 to simply be a nurse aid class. So those are some additional differences that are in that Program of Studies. And then our final slide has our list of locally developed courses. It's structured in terms of our general courses, ESL courses and applied studies courses. These are courses that the board has previously approved in the 2019-2020 year and 2020-2021 year, and we ask that you readopt the locally developed courses. Questions?
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Ms. Vinnie Chaplin, for this. I have just one specific question about the Latin American course. Who is developing that curriculum?
So curriculum is developed under our Curriculum and Instruction Department. The course was first proposed by a group from Huguenot High School. And did you want to add anything about that other than it will come from curriculum and instruction?
Right, and they, of course, will be consulting appropriate resources and perhaps courses that exist elsewhere as a model.
And I can tell you, Dr. M is very, very excited about it. And we also will be one of the first districts, not the first, but one of the first actually adopted. And so there are some resources that VDOE already provides. And so as she stated, we will have some curriculum architects as well as our curriculum specialists to work on the curriculum. Yeah, so it will be sailed.
Thank you. Mr. Hitchback?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for continuing to make our curriculum represent our scholars so they can see themselves in their learning. And my other comment is that because we have the four-by-four in high school, and of course, we know we have a whole semester, we've talked about this before, where the students might not be taking a math. I think it's really smart to break this up for our scholars who need a bit more scaffolding and support, who need to be exposed to math on a regular basis all year long and not just one semester each year. So I just wanted to say thank you for this thoughtful work, so I appreciate it.
Can I also add that we will still have the same amount of rigor, and we actually work with VDOE to come up with the guardrails in terms of, like, what are the qualifications for someone who should take Algebra 1, Part 1, and Part 2? Because again, we want to make sure that scholars are successful, and we'll put them in Algebra 1, and they not pass, and so we work with VDOE, and we have some clear guardrails for that. So we're going to continue to move forward, and it'll probably be a very small percentage of our scholars that fall into that category.
Ms. Ricard?
The prior high school I was at did an Algebra 1, 2, and a Geometry 1, 2, and it was really helpful for that group of students in passing their SOL, so I'm glad we are also moving ahead with that.
Thank you. Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for all this. Just a quick question on the Intensified Algebra. I understand we had low enrollment in that. Do we have any contexts within the Commonwealth? Are other districts doing Intensified Algebra, are they getting higher enrollment? Or where do we, where do we fit into that?
I don't have any data that's available for that right this moment, but we can certainly bring that to Curriculum and Instruction to provide additional information.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Receive an Update on Legislative Priorities.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Superintendent Cameras, School Board Members. I'm Matthew Stanley, the Director of Advocacy and Outreach, here to do a review of our Plan 2026 legislative priorities. I just saw a typo. So over the past several months, you all have been very vocal, quite candidly, about what you believe are some of our state legislative priorities going into the next legislative session. It's been incredibly helpful to make sure that we're preparing a list of legislative priorities that reflect not just the things that you believe the school division needs, but the things that we're also hearing from our students, our families, our staff members. So tonight, we are very happy to present to you some large legislative priorities and get into the nitty-gritty about what some of those policy proposals will be that we'll be asking the 2026 General Assembly to consider. First up, we're going to start with school construction and modernization. We've had many discussions in recent months about school facilities and the resource needs that we have as a division. So this is going to be front and center on our legislative priorities for the coming year. First and foremost, we are hoping the General Assembly will renew the Virginia Commission on School Construction and Modernization. If you recall, that commission was created in 2020 based on legislation that we asked Senator, then Senator McClellan to introduce for us. And it is through that commission that the school division has received tens of millions of dollars in state support through the School Construction Assistance Program, which was created out of one of their recommendations. We're hoping that that commission has further life in it for the next five years and that they will be continually able to recommend further policies to the General Assembly, further funding, further cost savings opportunities. As, you know, we talked about tonight, I've heard it referenced, there's 134 school divisions in Virginia who are doing school construction maybe 134 different ways. So are there further cost savings that the General Assembly can help us with, with creating better economies of scale, looking at our public procurement laws, seeing if there is any streamlining to be had that could save a few more dollars and help us build a few more schools? Next, we have Let Voters Fund Modern Facilities. Over the last couple of years, there has been legislation to allow localities to propose a referendum to their locality to authorize a 1% additional sales tax that would go specifically towards school construction. Over the last couple of sessions, that legislation has unfortunately been vetoed by the governor. This year, we are very hopeful that we will be able to see that legislation pass. And then that would be up to our city council to put that up for a referendum to our voters. And then finally, one of the really impactful strategies that the School Construction Commission recommended was in 2022, they provided about $500 million in per pupil grants to school divisions across the state. So every single school division benefited from that immediate financial assistance from the state to especially support with deferred maintenance any specific, like, priorities that were needed at that point in time. So we know that we're going into potentially another tough budget year for the General Assembly. We know that there is going to be a very significant increase in the state Medicaid forecast. We're doing re-benchmarking for K-12 public schools. We're starting to see some of those numbers come out. There are going to be a lot of recurring expenses. That is a one-time expense that we are hopeful that the General Assembly would favorably consider, knowing that it might be a leaner budget year. Priority two gets into our K-12 funding formula. And the very first item there is implementing the rest of the J-LARK recommendations. The Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, which is the state's bipartisan research entity, in 2023, their study found that Virginia was underfunding K-12 education by over $3 billion annually. Over the last couple of years, they have started to put in place some of the recommendations that J-LARK had provided to the state. We saw the support staff cap removed this year. We have seen proficiency-based ratios go into place for our multilingual students. There's a new special education student add-on. Some wonderful things that they have done. But the very biggest thing that they have not done is they have not provided the full infusion of resources into our system to bring us up to where the rest of our kind of border and similar states are in regards to education funding. There's still a bit that they need to do, and one of the ways they can do that is by moving to a student-based funding formula. I'm very happy to share that I was just reviewing the State Board of Education's meeting materials for this week and noted that in their materials, they are also asking the General Assembly to implement the student-based funding formula. Every two years, the State Board of Education is required by the Constitution of Virginia to prescribe the standards of quality, which can then either be modified by the General Assembly, but it is what the Board of Education says is what is supposed to be in place. What often happens is the General Assembly may not fund the new standards of quality that the board sets, so whether they actually are in place or not is debatable. But to see our State Board of Education also continuing to advocate for that student-based funding formula, I think continues to show that we are moving in the right direction. There is a great consensus around advocacy for that student-based funding formula and seeing that as one of the most impactful levers that the Board of Education also believes can help support Virginia's schools. Next, we have Reforming the Local Composite Index. That was one of the recommendations from J-LARK, is to look at that formula and look at how we can hopefully prevent any wild swings and how much funding we do receive from the state every year. In the last two biennia, when the LCI numbers came out, we realized, oh no, we're going to be starting about $10 million less than what we thought, and that's, that was the ballpark. So one of the recommendations was to, instead of that LCI being driven based off of whatever the most recent single year of data was, it would make it an average of the last three years of data, which would smooth any increases that we receive and would also, most importantly, smooth any declines that we would see in our state funding. So instead of a potential $10 million, $10 million less in funding, it might only be $4 or $5 million less in funding. I know nobody wants to talk about that many millions of dollars in less funding, but that could really potentially be a big safety net for us in the case that our LCI continues to go up. There are other things that they can look at with the LCI, including other formulas to look at fiscal health of a locality, like the Fiscal Stress Index. We actively encourage the General Assembly to be continuing to investigate those other indexes as well and see if there is perhaps an even better formula than the LCI. And then finally, increasing the payment in lieu of taxes. As you all know, many of the Virginia, or we do not receive tax revenue for any of these state-owned properties in the city limits. And of course, we have the seat of state government here, which does make Richmond quite unique when it comes to localities in Virginia. As I believe it was maybe Mr. Percival you shared at a recent meeting, we currently receive only a few million dollars a year in a pilot payment as compared to the total value of all of that taxes and property. If we were to receive tax revenue for that, it would be over $100 million a year. So we do believe that there is room for negotiation with the General Assembly and looking at whether we believe that pilot is fair, we don't, and seeing if there might be room for some compromise. And then our third big priority is strengthening our student mental health supports. We continue to hear from our students and our families that our kids are struggling, and we want to make sure that we're doing the best job that we can by supporting them with their mental health needs while they're here with us. There are a few ways that we can do that. There are the in-school supports that we have. We think of our specialized support staff, our psychologists, our behavior analysts, our school nurses. They are really a frontline at supporting our kids. And right now, we receive, I believe, three of those positions for every 1,000 students we have. This was a ratio that Senator McClellan, then Senator McClellan, got put into the state code and the state budget, and we've been able to expand the number of those positions in our schools. We would love to continue to invest in those staff, and so we're hoping the General Assembly will consider continuing to increase that ratio. Continuing to look at our telehealth expansion, Medicaid alignment, making sure that we are able to bill Medicaid for services and be able to receive some of that reimbursement. And then looking at the telehealth services that we have started to put in place. I know our wellness team has been working on those this last year, and we're looking forward to continued expansion of those, so we welcome any additional state support and resources. And then finally, continuing to really leverage the community-based providers that we have in our city. We have wonderful partnerships with RBHA and Childsavers, and we would love to be able to continue to expand those partnerships to serve more schools and more students. But we do know that those can be quite costly. So we are looking at the state to consider whether there could be any other competitive grants to help us scale up programs such as those. And then we do have a couple additional legislative priorities. These are ongoing items that are really of significant importance to the division. First is supporting our economically disadvantaged students. Right now, we receive a pool of funding called the At-Risk Add-on Program. We have had great success over the last seven or eight years making that At-Risk Add-on Program a much greater add-on. We know from research that students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds need approximately 40 to 50% more funding per student to have similar outcomes as kids in a more affluent locality. Right now, we are at, I believe, 39% is what the maximum state add-on is. We increased that from around 16% back when I started. So I believe that we've got a little more room to go with continuing to make sure that the At-Risk Add-on Program is equitably funded. And then moving on, increasing teacher and staff compensation to the national average. I know that that, we continue to have some salary increases here in Virginia, but as we move up, the rest of the country is moving up, and we're still lagging behind that national average teacher salary. So we continue to encourage the General Assembly to increase teacher and support staff salaries as well as providing maximum flexibility to school divisions to implement those. So there's often requirements for matching funds. When those can be waived, that's always nice. That releases a little bit of a burden on us, as well as with the timing of those. Sometimes the General Assembly will put specific timing in place for when things are supposed to happen by giving us more flexibility with that timing can also be very helpful. Out-of-School Time Partners. We very much continue to support funding for out-of-school time partner organizations. Some of them do receive direct appropriations in the state budget to support their work. So we, of course, support that. And then finally, increasing access to early childhood education. We spoke a little bit briefly about the need for more early childhood education, especially in South Side. So looking at continuing to fully fund the Virginia Preschool Initiative or the General Assembly to continue fully funding the childcare subsidy program. These are all things that continue to provide greater access and greater affordability for our families. So those are the legislative priorities that we plan to take to the legislature this year. And then just a little bit of a preview of the months ahead. And then just a little bit of a preview of the months ahead. Right now, we are in November, and we are trying to get a few of our legislators into our school. It is Take Your Legislator to School Month. I know it is a very busy time for them, but we have been talking to their offices and trying to get some visits set up. They might happen in December, but we're going to have the spirit of that Take Your Legislator to School Month. We're going to make it Take Your Legislator to School all year round. And then later this month, the new Local Composite Index data will be released. So we will know what our starting point is for the budget next year. So I know you will all be waiting for that. Very excited. Hopefully, good news. December is the first legislative drafting deadline. That is when legislators have to put in their requests for any legislation that they want to introduce during the session. They have a little bit of buffer on that. They can continue to have things drafted later, but there is a really important deadline at the very beginning of December. So if there are any other pieces of legislative, legislative ideas that are out there, it is really important to get those to your legislators right now. We're going to be facilitating a regional town hall with the League of Women Voters as our moderator. We did this last year, and myself and the legislative directors for Henrico County Public Schools and Trussville County Schools, we all hopped on a Zoom and had the League of Women Voters moderate us to talk about areas where all of our school divisions feel very strongly about advocacy priorities. So we talked about mental health. We talked about the J-LARK recommendations, and we're really excited to do that again and just leaning into that regional collaboration. We will also see the biennial budget released by Governor Yonkin. This will be, of course, his last budget. It is a full-year budget that he will be introducing, knowing that we have a Democratic General Assembly that will be in place in January. We do expect them to do a lot of work on that budget. So I don't know that what we see the governor introduce in December will bear a lot on what the final outcome of the session will be. But nonetheless, that will be a really important marker because that will allow us to draft budget amendments in collaboration with our legislators that will maybe do some of those budget-related things that we've talked about. In January, the session begins, and we are planning a lot of wonderful advocacy opportunities. Really excited for a wonderful collaboration with the Richmond Education Association. Say hi, Emma. Emma is with the REA and has been meeting with me to plan out some wonderful collaborative advocacy activities. I'm not going to spill all the secrets right now, but we've got some fun stuff planned, including training specifically for our teachers, making sure that those are at a time which will be accessible for them. And then in February, we, on February 2nd, we will have our RPS Lobby Day, our Advocacy Day. We have room for about 100 folks, mainly from our advisory councils, to be able to go down to the, to the General Assembly, visit with legislators and small groups, be introduced on the floor of the General Assembly. We take that opportunity to bring along a lot of our students and make sure they have great opportunities to talk to our legislators about these issues of great importance and their perspective on them. And then on President's Day, the VEA will have their annual Lobby Day, their Advocacy Day. It's a really important day for everybody to come out. There will be a big rally on Capitol Square. And when the legislators are inside their chambers and they hear all that yelling and all that screaming out on the lawn, they love it. It's, it's, it's a really important day to come out and show our force in great numbers. And then shortly after that, the House and the Senate budget proposals will be released, and we will know a little bit more about what direction the General Assembly is heading with what will be in their final conference budgets that they will adopt at the very end of session. This is a long-year session, so it will go until about mid-March. And then there will be a reconvene session in April, about 45 days after that. So we will be sharing a number of other updates with you all over the coming months, details on the town halls that we're scheduling, the trainings that we're planning with the REA, some of those other fun events that are in the kitchen right now getting cooked up. So I'm really excited for this year ahead. I think we have a wonderful opportunity to continue to make some real difference in policy and funding for Richmond, but also for school divisions around the state. So welcome any questions or feedback. Thank you.
Before we do any questions, thank you for your presentation. We did just reenact the legislative committee, so I just wanted to yield the floor to Ms. Ricard if she wanted to give an update on our, the meeting or add anything to what has already been shared.
Thank you. I just want to say, Mr. Stanley, you did a great job. And I think one thing we really talked about is how we, through town halls, can really educate our community on how to advocate, make it really simple for them, walk them through it, and also just continuing to work with city council and all our legislative partners to make sure that they know our message and that we're all together. But you do such a wonderful job. I also want to thank Mr. Stanley. He emailed us language to allow us to volunteer ourselves and reach out if the governor, incoming governor, needs any of, any school board members on her transition teams or education teams. I just really appreciate you jumping right on that. There are a few that have expressed interest, and I'm so excited for that. So hopefully, we can get someone from RPS in there.
Thank you, Ms. Fred.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Farouk? Sorry, Mr. Jafari and then Ms. Rizzi.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just want to echo sentiments. Really appreciate the insight and the informed way that you handle all of the information and you break it down and get it to us. And the way you step through that document like that, bit by bit. But I know you, you, you gave it to us like that, but I know that it didn't come to you like that. You had to actually sit there and absorb it. So again, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jafari. Yeah, these are big policy topics, and I know it doesn't all make sense at first, but we are trying to break it down and make it super easy for everyone to understand. So any tips that you all have for us to continue to share this information in a, in a helpful and easy way to digest? I welcome that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as always, thank you so much, Mr. Stanley, for this. Really great report that involves some or, you know, includes some really important advocacy points. My question is, you know, the LCI has been a pretty like controversial topic for many years. And, you know, Richmond is unique in the fact that even though our coffers may look like they're growing, we have a disproportionately, disproportionate number of students who live in poverty. And so we have a unique situation that it seems the state doesn't want to like necessarily talk about or like look at us as a individual kind of case study of like what can happen when this LCI is applied across the board without consideration for the circumstances of each district. My question is, do we have city support with that advocacy? Are city partners willing to go to bat for that recommendation and discussion? And then the same with the tax-exempt properties, right? We have a lot of high-value tax-exempt properties in this city. One of my, my employer is probably the main, you know? But, you know, we won't talk about that necessarily specifically, but, I mean, there's some really, really high-value tax-free properties in this city. And that is another thing that we don't talk a lot about, and it's kind of controversial when you bring it up. But I'm also curious about what our city partners think of that.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, thank you for the comments, Ms. Rizzi. First of all, the Local Composite Index does not take poverty into account in the formula. And I think that that is something that time and a time again, we point that out and say that maybe this isn't the right formula. We know that Richmond has very unique stressors on its budget that other localities don't have. One locality that shares an LCI that is remarkably close to ours is the County of Loudoun, which some may know that is one of the most affluent counties in the entire country. So to say that we have a similar ability to pay for education as compared to Loudoun County, that doesn't sit right. So there, there is that aspect of the LCI, not taking into account concentrated poverty. We do have the city support with looking at alternatives, very, very much so. At a minimum, we are hoping for moving to that three-year average to buffer any losses that we might see from continually increasing LCI. There is also the Fiscal Stress Index. When we look at that index, we see that Richmond is very fiscally stressed. So moving perhaps to a hybrid formula or a formula that maybe leans more on the Fiscal Stress Index is something that would probably benefit Richmond substantially because it would actually take into account all of the stresses that are on our local government revenues. We're at our tax ceiling right now. We can't tax our residents more. So we're just in a very different place than a county like Loudoun. And was there the taxes and properties? I included, we included an item on our legislative priorities this time regarding, there we go, the third item, increase the payment in lieu of taxes. This would help address that topic specifically. It is on the city's legislative agenda as well. However, we are, we do try to be realist and make sure that we understand what we think is going to be possible or not. We are hoping that this is the start of that conversation. We are not necessarily expecting that there is going to be a major change to the pilot this year, but we are aligned with the city in saying that, look, this is something else that we do need to address. Can we at least start having that conversation?
Mr. Hedgepath?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Stanley. This is a really great report. I, I want to echo in what you said. I appreciate it very much that, that the tax burden that our citizens of the city are bearing is significant and more, a lot more than our, our neighbors and a lot more than a lot of people can actually afford to pay. The, the, the rate, but plus also all of the assessments continuing to go up is pricing people out. Renters are having trouble too because they're having to make up, the landlords are making up that difference in the tax bills and the rent that they're charging, which affects all of our families. And so I think this is the best bang for our buck, right? This is the city we've discussed that we're, we are tapped, right? We, we are, the city is very great, very gracious and very generous, and I appreciate that, and will always say thank you for that. But, but, but the state really is where we can get more, more funding. And if the, if, if our, I appreciate you mentioning the partners, regional partners getting together and talking about the shared priorities. If we could continue to elevate that conversation, that, that the state, all state's public schools will benefit from revisiting the funding formula, right? Like, that is not just something that's specific to Richmond. And so I just applaud this work very much and want to help as much as I can. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd also like to add, you know, when we were meeting with the city of Richmond for the budget formula, we talked in great length about J-LARK. We talked in great length about the LCI. As we are talking to delegates, as we are talking to other partners, we are having those same conversations. There's this level of consistency that we've been able to draw this conversation to more ears than what we may have had before, you know, starting out with the, the, the meeting that we had at Maymount with the city and then having the delegation meeting with the delegation in the Senate, then, you know, us coming together. And I like to give an honorable mention to Dr. Harris Mohammed, who co-chairs the legislative committee with Ms. Ricard. And a lot of the conversation is about having the same language and talking about the same things. And so I think we have definitely hit the ground running. If this is the, this is the opportunity to do it, this is the time to do it, and I'm really excited about the work that's already been underway. I echo my sentiments of my colleagues, Matthew, Mr. Stanley. I mean, he is a, I'm like, when we were talking in the meeting, and he's just going, going, going. I don't think he even took a breath, just the passion you can just, it exudes from every time you do a presentation. So thank you so much for the continued work. I think we've all established that while the city is very much wanting to continue to support the efforts for RPS, we've established that we have to go outside of those, those walls and, you know, it, it definitely will One minute. be approached where we have to go to the state as well as other localities. That was established a while ago, and so I just appreciate all the work that has been done up until this point, and I cannot wait to see what comes of it because I do believe that we will, we will reap the benefits of all the work that we put into this process. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. And I've almost forgot, I have one final thing that's super, super important. That is a really big shout out and thank you to Mr. Hedgepath for the wonderful op-ed that he had published in the Richmond Times-Dispatch this last week. Thank you for advocacy, Mr. Hedgepath. That was well done. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any updated policy committee recommendations. However, we will be voting tomorrow on quite a few. And so if you have not had a chance since last month to take a look at the recommendations, please make sure that you give any feedback or insight prior to tomorrow's meeting because we will be voting on quite a few very important policies. Moving right along to 3.08, receive a first read, contracts over 100,000.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one for kitchen equipment repair and maintenance. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, we have received an update on literacy plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uploaded to Board Docs is our biennial Division Literacy Plan, which has been approved by the Virginia Department of Education. It is just like our plan from last year with the exception that we have added more at the middle school level per the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act and some additional requirements at the upper grades in elementary as well. We are thrilled with the progress that we're making on this front and are excited to continue forth as laid out in the plan and happy to take any questions.
Any questions about the literacy plan? All right, who has closed?
It moves that the school board of the city of Richmond convene in closed session. One, to discuss and consider a Part II grievance appeal of personnel matter number 2025-05 involving the performance and possible discipline of employees and to discuss with legal counsel regarding the same matter as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and A8. Number two, to discuss the performance of central office employees and officers and appointees related to federal grant and to discuss with legal counsel regarding the operation related to federal grant as authorized by Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1 and A88. Three, to discuss the hiring of a central office employee is authorized by Virginia Code 2.2 dash 3711A1 and that concludes.
It's been moved by Ms. Burke and seconded by Mr. Jafari, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Farouk?
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi? Dr. Harris Mohammed? Ms. Burke? Mr. Jafari? Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are now in closed, colleagues, if we can transition to conference room.